We do have ceremonial matter tonight. I have a proclamation to read, or if you'd like to join me up here. And she has promised that I can't mispronounce this in any way, shape, or form, so that's my disclaimer. Shen Yun Performing Arts Day, January 25th through the 27th, 2019. Whereas the Falun Dafa Association of Kansas City is dedicated to the revitalization of 5,000 years of genuine Chinese culture, and whereas the Falun Dafa Association of Kansas City is devoted to promoting a higher standard of ethical and moral behavior, whereas the Falun Dafa Association of Kansas City is determined to preserve the very best of art in all forms, and whereas in its endeavors to do all these, the Falun Dafa Association of Kansas City has brought Shen Yun Performing Arts to the Kansas City area nearly every year since 2008. And whereas Shen Yun Performing Arts presents the true cultural heritage of traditional China, and whereas Shen Yun Performing Arts is comprised of a unique group of leading artists who share in a vision of cultural renewal, and whereas Shen Yun Performing Arts not only entertains, but also more deeply educates, enriches, and inspires, offering audiences of all ages a rare experience of consummate beauty and goodness, and whereas evoking themselves a virtue, compassion, and courage, Shen Yun Performing Arts leads millions of viewers from all cultural backgrounds filled with joy, energy, hope, and peace in the most prestigious venues of the world. Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Brian Hassig, the mayor of Harrisonville, do hereby recognize Falun Dafa Association of Kansas City by reclaiming the days of January 25th to the 27th, 2019, as Shen Yun Performing Arts Day in the city of Harrisville, and join my fellow citizens in extending our best wishes for their continued success in the future. So, here you are on behalf of myself and the city.
You want to?
Get a shot of it?
Shot of it here, you don't need to be there.
Please, thank you.
All right, one, two, three. There we go.
All right. And I believe you have some handouts as you did last year.
I do, and if it's okay, I'm just gonna leave them up here, is that all right?
That is...
And then if anybody wants them, they can take them as they leave.
Very good, very good.
I do want to express to everybody that this is an amazing show. You guys are so supportive of me, and I would really love it if you would see the show and see what you're actually supporting. It is something that you will think about and enjoy for years to come. It's not like any other show you've ever seen, and I've seen a lot of shows. It's at Coffin Center, which if you've not been there before, you need to go there anyway. And this show is considered to be the best in the world right now. And so to go there and see this amazing show, it's a once-in-a-lifetime experience. I've seen lots and lots of different kinds of shows over the years, and I can tell you that this is the most unique and amazing show. You will not be sorry you went to see it. I've never heard anybody say, "I did not like Shen Yun." And I want to thank all of you for your support again, as always. I know it may not seem like much, but it's very important to us that we get that support. We're an all-volunteer, nonprofit group. We do this out of the love of our hearts, and that's it. I mean, we just love this show so much that we work hard and tirelessly to present and promote this show for the, basically, the double state area and anybody who comes from miles around to see it. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our ceremonial matters tonight. At this time, I will open the floor to public participation. Anybody who has anything to bring before this board that is on our scheduled agenda, please feel free to step forward. Seeing no one, I will close with public participation, and we'll move on to the approval of the minutes. First tonight, we have the minutes from the regular meeting of December 3rd, 2018.
This is approved.
Second?
I have a motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Levison. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next, we have the minutes from the special meeting of December 10th, 2018.
This is approved.
Second?
Motion from Alderman Dickerson and a second from Alderman Levison. Any further discussion?
Mr. Fair?
Yes?
I'll abstain from voting on this.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. Moving on to our agenda items, first tonight, we have the youth goose hunt. Good evening, chief.
Good evening, mayor. Members of the Board of Alderman, before you tonight is a request from Missouri Conservation Agent Phil Needham to have a goose hunt out to the palm that's behind the Justice Center out of Cass County there, June 19th. He's done this several times in the past, never had any problems. I think he's trying to eliminate the goose population and help out around town. He takes two or three participants from his hunter safety class and has the hunt, and he's requesting to do it again this year. It's just, we have to give him permission to shoot firearms within city limits. It's not supposed to be prohibited. Entertaining, any questions?
Do they cook the geese, or what do they do with them? Are they just throw them away? Or are they...
I don't think they throw them away. I think they clean them and...
Yeah.
I'm not positive, but knowing Mr. Needham, I'm sure I just don't throw them away.
All right, any other questions?
I make my way through this.
Okay. Motion from Alderman Turner and a second from Alderman Dickerson for approval. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It is approved. Council Bill 001?
Council Bill 001, a resolution by the Board of Alderman of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, authorizing the police chief to enter into a police training reimbursement agreement with the police department recruits to assist financially with living expenses while attending the Cass County Sheriff's Office Regional Training Academy and establishing an effective date.
In an effort to try to get more recruits for the police department, which they've had problems filling all the positions available, which I think, do you have four of them open now? Two? Okay. And that's what we're trying to work towards, is a full police department. But getting qualified individuals in that have the education to be police officers, which is the post-certification, it's one of the areas that we've seen other police departments give a living stipend to a recruit, and they can go to the academy, and that's how they get their certification, and then they are dedicated for, in our case, what we've written is three years, but they have to stay with Harrisonville Police Department for three years, or they have to pay back a prorated amount. So that's what we've taken to the committee. The Public Safety Committee was for it, and we brought it to the board to approve that if we have vacant spaces, that we will consider hiring somebody as a recruit, give them a living expense. They won't be an employee, in fact. They will just be helping them, pay for the classes at the sheriff's office, which, so it's close, and then they can come in and work on holidays, but they will be, they will not be employees at that point until they become probationary employees. And they will, if they graduate, get their post-certification, then we will then start them on regular shift, they'll go through training, then after a year, they can become a full-time employee. But we think this is a way to bring more potential officers in, get them the training they need, and get them dedicated into the city of Harrisonville.
Happy just to point a clarification, so the third paragraph of the staff report incorrectly states they are full-time employees by going through the academy. The agreement really divides their payment into two classes. One is an allowance for living expenses, but they're not an employee until they complete the academy. At such time, they're hired as an employee, they become an employee. They're just a matter of clarification, just didn't want this language to create confusion or misunderstanding.
And at that point, they would no longer be paid living expenses?
They would get whatever salary...
It would simply be salary like all the other officers?
Like the other officer.
So what we do is we pay them a reduced amount as a living expense or a living wage, and then when they become a probationary officer, then it would be our minimum in our scale. So we start them less, because they're not working for the police department, it's just little living expenses. But once they become a probationary officer, once they pass the sheriff's academy, then we would pay them our minimum based on the wage scale.
Can you clarify that further? What is the stipend that they're being paid? You said that they're going to be paid a living stipend. What is that amount?
So we started it off at $30,000, I believe, let's see if we've got that included in there.
He dragged rings in the back of the...
$30,936 is the recruitment allowance. And then, at this point, based on our wage scale, $38,607 is the starting wage for a full-time employee.
I'm a little conflicted with the language in paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, which says that the city will pay the recruit living expenses. I heard you describing it as we would assist with living expenses, because it seems as though the way it's written, it could be inferred that we're paying all of the living expenses during their time in training. So I think I would prefer that it said, that it would be more definitive there.
In paragraph 5 of the draft agreement, the city will pay a recruit a recruitment allowance, and it's stated as calculated herein the agreement. So I think we're covered there. We can change it if you like, but I think we're okay, and the purpose is to be for their living expenses, because I think that's the intent of what it is, but specifically, they get a recruitment allowance as defined in the agreement. And that's a defined term, which we later, if you look at paragraph 5.1, says recruitment allowance, and therein specifies what recruitment allowance means in specific terms. Now, in the staff report, it may have been less specific, but the agreement is very specific.
Okay, I'm in the agreement. Would you identify where that's... I'm in the staff report.
Are you on packet page 14?
Let me get down to the agreement. Okay, I'm in the agreement now.
Paragraph 5 says the city will pay the recruit a recruitment allowance. Calculated, specified herein, and we'll go through the rest of the paragraph. And then, so recruitment allowance, which is capitalized, is a defined term. If you go to paragraph 5.1, that's where it states that their annual rate equals $30,936.
So that's what their stipend is going to be, is $30,936?
Yes.
Thank you for the clarification.
How long is the training?
Six months.
Six months? So we're paying $30,000 for six months?
Yes. It's on an annual basis.
Well, that's what I was confused about. So it's not really 30,000, it would be like 15,000?
It's based on, you figure a yearly salary, because we've got it set up that way.
Right. But the actual is like 15,000?
I think it's 11, we figure 1189.
Eighty-five.
Every two weeks.
Adjusted for rounding sense, because there's a little bit of a rounding.
Is there a reason why we write it up, like it's just because we do that, even though it doesn't last a year? Okay. Okay.
Alderman Turner, you had a comment earlier.
You made a comment earlier about while they're in training, whether somebody could work the holidays versus them, but yet they're not employees, so I don't know how that would go, and what it...
Do you consider that training?
Okay, so that, what...
There's two types of training. I think that might be a misunderstanding.
No, no, what it is, is instead of them just getting a holiday, we figure since they are being paid to go to class, if the classes are closed, then we can bring them in for a day to...
Okay, well, then what about liability and insurance, whether to get hurt or not or here doing that, since they're not employees?
It'd be the same as anybody else that rides with a police officer.
Okay, so I mean, they would sign a...
Swagging.
Like other way, and basically be like a ride-along.
Yeah.
I mean, that's, so that not doing any training or work, and just riding a law for that day, same as anybody else.
We figure that's, again, a good way to expose them to what goes on on the streets, instead of just going through the academy.
Something that they could do, or they have to do?
At this point, we are going to require it.
That's different from the kind of training they would receive after they get out of the academy, and they then are assigned to an officer to conduct their training to become a police officer.
Right. When we originally talked about this, what is the intent for, like, some of your officers that were going to be with these recruits or whatever, to see if they felt like they would be a good fit?
We talked about that, maybe bringing them in a couple weeks early. Mr. Welch and I haven't discussed that since.
Well, I thought maybe that's why you guys were thinking of putting them in the ride-along.
No, I think kind of what Mr. Welch is referring to is like Columbus Day would be a good example. The city of Harrisonville doesn't recognize Columbus Day, however, Cass County does. And in that instance, they wouldn't just have the day off, they would come right with an officer.
Right, but it's still with the intent of them...
A ride-along is for them to learn, observe.
To learn and see if, I mean, the officer's obviously going to get feedback.
Well, hopefully by that time, they've decided that's the career they want to go into, and we're committed to them, but yeah, it's just more observation than learning.
Ride-along means same as you or me.
Right, and I understand that, and I just, when we originally talked about it, be a possibility, it's difficult.
Alderman, you got the...
So John, what happens if we get about halfway through this, and you all figure out that this is not your person? Where do we go? I mean, we're kind of stuck in...
That would be...
Do we have an out clause?
Like, well, what's our vetting for even bringing them in would be the first question?
That would be on us, because they're not leaving of their own accord. So we would have to eat that up.
So we would have to finish out their training and then send them on their way?
Well, if we're halfway through, we would let them go.
Okay, okay, that's what I wasn't sure.
Because I don't think we are going to get to the point where, unless they do something in the academy. But maybe they get, while in the academy, they get stopped and arrested for DWI. At that point, we would nullify the contract and say, no more, we're done.
Does that need to be in there?
So, that's the...
Well, I guess then my only other thought, I mean, because sometimes personalities are just not what you're looking for, and you might not know that until they're a few weeks in.
Prior to, you know, we're not going to just say, okay, this is our guy and put him through. We are going to run them through the exact same process we would for a regular police officer. They are just a police program. They will have the background, the CVSA, we will do everything, the exact same, the physical, the psych.
So you'd be pretty confident?
And then an interview before you let them in the academy? I mean, that's part of that.
They are required to obey the law.
And if they, or if they're breaking the law, then they're not...
So if they're breaking the law, then they violated the term of the agreement. Also, there's evaluations at six months and 12 months, so they're, between those two things, you'd have a couple of times where you could decide to terminate and send them on your way. However, under those circumstances, the city would not be reimbursed the cost. If they're hired as a probationary officer, or after the city paying for the academy, then they're committed to the city for three years, and for every, if you divide that three years by 36 versus their cost, if they leave early, if they decide they get hired by Kansas City, Missouri, or another city, then...
How embarrassing.
At that point in time, they would, per the agreement, need to reimburse the city.
Yeah, I just didn't, I just wanted to make sure that if we got, if you got into a certain timeframe, and you figured out this person really wasn't for us, then you had an out for it. And we would be stuck in...
I don't think it's any effort that I can afford.
Yeah, and they have to comply with, you know, the rules and regulations, which is also in the agreement.
Does the academy make them have health insurance, like, before they come, or do they offer it in some way that they can purchase it? Because that's my other concern. If they're not our employee, then we're not providing insurance, and then they're in our police car and...
We are providing insurance.
You are?
Health insurance, yes.
Okay, okay.
We're limiting what we do, what we give in the way of benefits.
Okay.
But health insurance is other than that.
Health insurance, okay, good, good.
For the individual, not for a family.
Yes.
For the individual.
Okay, that was my main concern.
Yeah.
Is that just life? Is it health? Is it life? Is it dental?
I think we've got it in there. It's, I think it was long-term disability, medical, and...
I don't think it's just for them.
It's section 6. City will provide standard city benefits, including workers' compensation, medical, dental, life, and long-term disability insurance for the recruit only.
Any other questions?
I make a motion that we move Council Bill 02.
This is a resolution, so we just need a motion to approve if you are...
A motion to approve.
All right. A motion from Alderman Dickerson for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Sorry.
Second from Alderman Milner. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Council Bill 001 will become Resolution R 001. Council Bill 002?
Council Bill 002, a resolution by the Board of Alderman to approve amending the pay scale by increasing the minimum wage and pay level .25 to match the current minimum wage as established by the state of Missouri and establishing an effective date.
As you probably saw on the, when you went unvoted, that there's a minimum wage law that was on ballot, and it was approved. The change is immediate this year. Started at 8.60 an hour, and then we'll increase up to, or 85 cents, up to 2023, and peak at $12 an hour. We don't want to commit ourselves to doing that, but we think it is important that we increase our minimum wage, especially for our summer help, up to 8.60, so that we can compete with the fast food joints and with the other entities that are paying that minimum wage, because government is exempted, and we may want to, we may choose that in the future, but at this point, we think we need to increase that up to the 8.60 for this year, and then consider it again at the end of this year, beginning of next year, whether we want to go up again. It will increase the costs at the parks a little bit, they're going to increase some of their fees, and that will counterbalance the increase of the minimum wage, of this wage, but we, again, feel we can then attract good employees, and we don't want to be left out.
Okay, any questions? This is another resolution, so...
I make a motion that we approve this.
A motion of approval from Alderman Turner. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Levison. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And Council Bill 002 will become Resolution R 002. Next item is our January 21st meeting, that is Martin Luther King Day, where we're going to, we'll go a meeting that night. We were looking for a suggestion change, perhaps Tuesday?
I think if the city's open, we should have it.
I agree.
I mean, they have to work, so why are we different? I mean, I'm not working my job. I mean, it's harder, but, I mean, that's one that we have versus another, it has an item, but it sees open, and I do, we should have it.
It's the board's discretion.
What do you think?
I don't know. Do we care what other people think? I mean, because this is where the big hubbub came last year, and we were treated in a way that I thought was unfair. So, you know, I didn't think we were showing any disrespect by having the meeting, but, you know, I'm not opposed to move it to the day. I mean, I don't care. It doesn't affect my life.
Well, I think Matt makes a really good point, because I think we had a choice to give employees that day off, and as a board, we chose not to. So that meant we choose to stay open. So I think then we have to turn around and do our job and be here on our scheduled meeting day.
And I would gladly try to.
I mean, no disrespect, I mean, if the city was closing, yeah, you know, we move it, move it today, but...
With the, with the lack of a motion to move, it would just, we'll just, we don't need anything to leave it as is, I'm just pointing that out. Unless somebody wants to move it, you can make a motion to move it. If you don't, nobody has that desire, then it can stay as is, so, totally the board's discretion.
I have a question, maybe a little superfluous, but why did we put it on here to begin with? Was there a point?
It was discussed last year about...
Yeah, about having the meeting. I know city hall was open, but about having the meeting, whether or not we should have a meeting that night. So, we wanted to bring it to the board.
Okay, I just wanted to...
Again, it's a board decision, it's not, I mean, we're just bringing it if you guys say no, that, I mean, we'll go with whatever you all decide.
I'd love to have a whole day, but...
Unless I have a motion, I'm going to move on.
What about... Just throwing this out there, Martin Luther King was about giving, I don't know what all...
Excuse me.
...speech a million times, but that being said...
It's actually a day of service is what it's supposed to be. It's supposed to be a day of service for...
That's sort of, okay, that being said...
Clint, we can't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I know you're passionate about it, you, you know, you've said that, and I mean, I don't necessarily have a feeling one way or another, but, I mean, it did kind of put us on the spot. The only thing I was thinking of is maybe giving the employees the opportunity to, I mean, have some of the firemen stand out at Walmart, have some of the policemen...
We actually have something in, we actually have something that I was going to bring up during Alderman Committee reports, but I can bring it up now if you'd like. We're actually going to have a Martin Luther King Day of Service. We're going to set up outside the grocery stores to collect canned goods and other dried foods for the local food pantry, because, again, if you research what Martin Luther King Day, why businesses gave employees the day off, that's what it was for. It was to allow them to go and serve their communities, and it's supposed to be a day of service. Well, I think most places just give the day off, there's nothing about serving your community, so employees can sign up for an hour, two hour. We're going to have a sign-up sheet, they can sign up to go out and help collect the canned goods, and we're going to do it from, what was it, eight to five or something?
Seven to five.
Seven to five. So we'll have shifts of people out collecting the goods, and it all goes to the food pantry. We've talked to the stores, talked to the food pantry, we've got it all arranged.
Yep.
So, fair enough.
I think it's great, but...
Took the words out of my mouth. So that's what, that's what's going on during the day. Again, the meeting, that's, if no one wants to move, we can move on to the next agenda item, so, okay?
Excuse me.
All right, so we'll move on. Council Bill 003?
Council Bill 003, an ordinance of the city of Harrisonville, Missouri, revealing chapter 435 sign regulations of the Code of Ordinances and enacting in lieu thereof a new chapter of 435 sign regulations and establishing an effective date.
Okay, this is what, we had the public hearing on. Mr. Welch said we went over this in closed session. This was approved unanimously by the Planning and Zoning Board Thursday evening. Excuse me. Only question that was really raised there was whether or not the, some of the changes affected the current signs, and if they were considered non-conforming. Mr. Fairfield has assured me there is a section in there that deals with the non-conformance. It's not something that, the concern at planning zoning was if a sign currently meets the sign ordinance that's in place, but will now be non-conforming because of an update, or not going to go out and make places, update their signs, give them six months, whatever, it'll be like most anything else, if the sign is taken down, or, I guess would be...
Like its grandfather.
There are several things. That part of the code essentially didn't really change. Legally non, there's two sections that deal with non-conforming signs. There are some signs that are amortized over a period of time, and it describes as, basically, that you have so many months to get in conformance. I think it's 36 or something like that. And then there's legally non-conforming signs. So if a business had a sign, for example, their, part of the ordinance now requires that a marquee sign be within a certain distance from the peak of the roof of the business, and let's say it's a few inches off, as long as they keep it maintained, because it was legal before, as long as it was legal before, properly permitted by the city, it then becomes a legal non-conforming sign, as long as they maintain it, they can keep.
Does this include temporary signs?
The change, the ordinance change is, includes, what we're talking about is the non-conforming...
Right. Right, temporary signs are not non-conforming signs, because they were never approved or permitted signs to begin with.
So I mean, I'd say if it's ever signed up now, that doesn't meet this?
If it, temporary sign that doesn't meet the code is in violation. It can't be, it's not, temporary signs are not non-conforming signs. That's not what is intended by, by this, this code. And even if you, someone would try to argue with was, the question would be, was the temporary sign legal under the original? And the new temp, the new temporary sign is actually more liberal than the old one. So my, my guess is that most temporary signs that violated the old one because size didn't change, so if the size was off, it was illegal before. The city went through a period of time with an agreement with the federal court and with the ACLU and Mr. Street, is that there were certain sections that would not be initially enforced while we waited for the preliminary. There was a preliminary injunction specifically with regards to temporary signs, election signs. Once this is settled, that lawsuit will end and this will become the law. And at, at that point in time, whatever the law is, for example, you are restricted in the total amount of sign facing, your aggregate square footage, so you don't have somebody putting up 50 signs in their yard, which would clutter the neighborhood. But other than that, you're, you still have your six foot. They can have multiple signs at, at that, and they can keep them up before they restricted into the period of time. They can, if the Taylor Swift, there's a Taylor Swift concert on January 7th, but, and it's now May, they can still have it up. Doesn't make any difference.
Questions?
Okay, I have a couple of things. When we, when we were discussing this with the lawsuit and stuff, I thought we were going in to change specifically the direction that the ACLU was going. I didn't realize we were going to spend all the time and money that we have revising the entire sign thing, because I know we had talked about that and said we would do that down the road. The problem I have with this is there are so many changes in here, having gotten this on Friday. I don't think anybody has had a chance to really go through it and look at it, but the other problem I have is... As a community, I feel like we should have maybe pulled some people in from the community to discuss some of these changes. I know it's our right as a city to make the guideline and set the parameters for signs, but, I mean, the people that we're talking about for these are the business people. So I think it might have been a nice idea to bring, maybe just form a little committee and just say, here's what we're thinking, let's run this stuff by, anybody have thoughts one way or the other, you know, just to give the appearance that we are not just going to come in, set down the rules and say, here it is, like it or not. I just think it would have been a really good idea. I kind of like to have time to look over this and, and let some people throughout the community look over it.
That's why we had the public hearings. I would tell you, we're under somewhat of a time crunch put on us by the federal court with respect to this. When we, when we worked at doing this, my intent was as best as possible to retain the structure of the old ordinance. The ACLU, even though the preliminary injunction may have been limited, had we gone to a full trial of it, there is some constitutional law that, that would have allowed them to attack potentially much of the ordinance, because essentially, all sign ordinances are content based. And so you get into this argument about the level of scrutiny that you go through. Primarily what we did with regards to things that might affect the business was actually put in clarification, so hopefully it was easier for them to read. We didn't make massive changes to the areas with respect to business signs. But we did do some clarifications and part of those clarifications were done because the ACLU felt, and we had to agree, that some of the language was somewhat vague. And that's part of, of their complaint, is if it's difficult to understand what the standard is. So we tried to, for example, the measurement, how do you measure the height of a sign? If the sign's on a hill, do you measure it from this end, this end, in the middle, or... So we tried to do certain things that would make it easier for them to understand specifically what their rights are, gave them actually better appeal abilities than they had before, and defined a lot of terms. We restructured it where it made some sense, but for the, for the most part, we were trying, even though we'd made quite a few changes in our mediation, there was a lot of pushback. We, we negotiated hard to keep as much of the structure as we can. They were initially asking for much more of it to be thrown out.
So the ACLU made us change the entire sign policy? I thought they were just going after us for one small section.
No, that is, that is, that is not accurate in this case. They...
That's what the complaint was filed on, but they...
No, actually, the complaint, if you look at their filings, they talked about quite a few different sections. What the judge did, typically when you have an injunction process, the judge has a right to issue a preliminary injunction before he does the final hearing. And the point, at the preliminary injunction, he said, well, okay, since the initial complaint was about the political sign or the election sign, I'm going to enjoin the city from controlling those types of signs while we see we can mediate this and before we have a final hearing. During the process, it became very clear, well, the ACLU, their attorney for Mr. Street made it very clear that it was their intent to challenge more than that section. And that was, we went with that throughout this process. So our goal was as much as possible to save the city as much money as we could, obviously, by getting the resolution to this, because certainly constitutional law does address content-based signs. Part of our argument, to be somewhat specific, although I don't always do this in a public meeting, was look at the nuance between majority opinions in the Supreme Court and concurring opinions. The, the most recent case that is most courts look at from the Supreme Court had a fairly significant, three or four judges, I don't call it the number exactly, that were the concurring opinion. Those are the judges in their concurring opinion, which wasn't the actual finding of the court. They joined the finding, but in their concurring opinion said that we think that there's a number of things that cities ought to be able to do. Now, the court didn't really decide that term in things like street signs and, and other things. They went down through, listed a number of things and we used that in our negotiation during mediation, and I think very successfully. So what we ended up with was staff had some concerns that we tried to integrate at the same time, because it made, because as we're changing things around, one of our goals is we get an ordinance in a position that the ACLU feels comfortable with, so they don't look for another plaintiff to sue us again, which they could have done had we just tried to argue to the court, a very narrow change to it. Assuming we were successful after spending thousands of dollars in attorney's fees, we could have had another lawsuit as soon as someone else had a complaint that attacked or was addressed by a different section. So we hopefully were looking for a more comprehensive solution that solves it for a period of time, but keeps the businesses intact as much as possible. So it's, it's, it was a complicated process with them, but we, we tried to work within those parameters and I, I think overall, we, we got a good result for the city.
Okay, to Marcy's point, I want to ask this. If we want to, in the future, we want to change some of the requirements for business signs, because I know what you're talking about, we can still do that.
Absolutely.
If we put this in place.
Absolutely.
We can still come back with, with business signs that, that want to be, want different, because I know about these sign ordinances and they haven't been popular. I agree with you 100%.
But I guess my point being David, and I'm not interrupting you, but...
No, that's okay.
If, I guess, I feel like we were not told that you were going to go in and go through this whole thing. I thought we were dealing with one issue in our sign orders. And I, and you know, I mean, anybody can come back on any given day and sue us for whatever they want with the ACLU and they're going to, so...
But that wasn't there.
But...
Well, I...
I just think this was really quickly done and I, I don't want to see us make such big mistakes on it.
And what you're saying is right, that quick, but the sign ordinance after Diner Wright got put in this into effect, because he did it. It's hard to pull out. It's hard to, it's hard to examine. I mean, I sit down and tried to get it going on. I thought I could, because I knew some of the stuff, because I voted on it, but it's way too complex to try to fix it all in one place. And then with this lawsuit coming out, you know, this made a difference, which was a surprise to me, but it's my understanding, now you tell me if I'm wrong, we need to put this in a place, so we're following their rules, their guidelines they laid down. Is that right?
Well, the mediation settlement agreement gave us, I believe, until September 25th?
February 25th. I'm sorry, January 25th.
January, sorry.
It's like, that's a new date.
January 25th, in order to get a settlement and get a new sign, this sign ordinance, because the ACLU signed off on the agreement before you, they said this would be acceptable to them, in their objections. And they signed off on the entire ordinance, which I think is, is something in and of itself. If you want to make changes afterwards, but if we, if we do not meet the January 25th date, then at the very least, we will spend additional fees getting the federal judge to continue it. It's likely that if, if, even if he does that, that he will set a date for, for an actual hearing. And we, if we make those changes, we will then have to meet with the ACLU and potentially mediate her again. Or they could decide, well, we'll just go to court and try to get everything right. They gave up certain things during this process. If they decide they want to go to a full hearing, they can do that and that would be an expensive proposition for the city.
So, so what you're saying is the ACLU has looked over all these changes you made and they liked every single one of them that we did?
They have agreed, everything...
Even though they didn't ask us for all of these changes?
They asked for a lot more than just election signs. They had quite a few issues that they, we went through this paragraph by paragraph during the mediation.
But did they agree that the changes you've made are adequate?
Yes.
So we do have a guarantee that this lawsuit will end?
Yeah.
And this is...
There was a settlement agreement signed by the ACLU and the city.
Mr. Street.
And, and Mr. Street, and approved by the mediation judge, so that if we approve this, it's done.
And this is what we were all given in closed session, was this copy with all these changes, everything, everything that was changed. Alderman Bogdan, you had your hand up.
I'd like to make a motion that we pass this as written.
And this is an ordinance, so we would have to spend the ruling and move it to a second reading tonight.
I'm really sorry, but I've been trying to get in for the last 15 minutes.
I'm just explaining what would need to happen. You, you, you will get your opportunity.
Thank you.
My understanding is once we do that, then there will still be...
Yes, there, there is time for discussion. If we, if we were to have a motion and, and all that, there's still, I always give time for discussion, absolutely. However, if you have a comment, if you want to...
Yeah, I do.
But I do have, was that your motion? I guess I want to clarify first. You, you've made a motion to move Council Bill 003 to a second reading?
Yes.
Okay, you have a second?
I second.
You have a second from Alderman Dickerson. Any further discussion? Alderman Reese?
I guess not, because my discussion would have been before that.
You still, whatever, they can always withdraw their motion, so if you had a point that will change things, you were...
It's more of a question that I have.
Okay, absolutely.
Do we have this large document and we have a very detailed explanation of why all these detailed things were done? And I don't doubt for a minute, the things that were done are probably in good faith and should have been done. My concern is, as a small business person, or a large business person, or somebody that's moving into Harrisonville and they want to have a business here, are they going to have this kind of a document to tell them what kind of a sign they can do? Or are they going to have something a little simpler? Or are they going to have time to read this thing? Or what are we doing for our people?
They have, if, if somebody was to come in, they, obviously, the staff understands the sign. They, they will assist with the sign regulation. The way it's written now, I can tell you, there's already, like, like David said and Marcy both, it's, this has been an ongoing, you know, people say, I don't know what kind of sign I can have. It's very confusing. My read of this is a lot of things that were very, very hard to understand have been clarified, tried to simplify it to make it easier.
How long did it take you, Brian? Two, three days?
To read through this?
Yeah.
Oh yeah, I didn't read it in a day. I mean, obviously, I don't...
That's what we've had.
They've had this, it's closed session. We got the same document.
The closed, all of the changes that were made?
I might state that this is based, it's a very similar in many ways to the ordinance as it was before. So the businesses were already dealing with this ordinance. If the board decides that they want to simplify certain sections, especially with respect to the businesses, I don't think that will cause, it shouldn't, but I can't promise, would cause further litigation. The, um... The ordinance was already in place and it was already long and somewhat complicated. And that's one reason that the negotiations were somewhat difficult.
Do you think it's simpler now?
Yes.
Simpler for the average person to sit and read?
I, I think it, as much as it could be, at this, without changing dramatically the entire document, if we had gone, the problem with trying to dramatically change the entire document is that it could impact businesses in a very negative way. And as Alderman Milner suggested, and others have suggested, that some businesses may be concerned how it affects that. As much as possible, we tried to limit how businesses were affected by these changes.
Will the businesses be able to avail themselves of these changes?
Well, as, as we were talking about the non-conforming, unless they are, say, we'll use Clint's building as an example, just because we know he's got a sign on front. If Clint was to change that sign at the top of his building and it was, it was going to be a, a, a new sign, but it didn't fit the new sign ordinance, there was something changed. Maybe it reduced the, the width or something. I don't think it did, just using as an example, then he would have to conform to the new sign regulations. Now, if he was going to read...
Okay, but how would he know? Before, before he designed a sign, how would he know? So he would, could avoid that sort of thing?
To, to change your sign, you have to get a permit. Yeah, I mean, your, your signs are permitted, so you'd come in and apply for a permit for a new sign. I believe Tim Suluas came in years ago, you might remember this. His sign that he had out there for gaslight had been there for years and years, this design, basically, or shape. Well, the new sign was going to be very similar to that, but it violated the, the ordinance, the way that the changes that were made years ago. So I don't remember if it was the Board of Alderman or the Board of zoning adjustment, but he was granted a variance to put that sign back the way it was, because it was, it was the same style and they felt that, you know, okay, it, it wasn't causing a problem before, and so they had to make a variance in that case. But then in that case, that was a, a, the old sign was fine. If he was just fixing the old sign and maintaining it, he would have had no issue. But he wanted to put a new sign, applied first permit and was said, well, this new sign does not meet the criteria. That's when they would encounter an issue, is if they come in to get a new sign or say a new business goes into an old building and they're changing the sign, they would have to come in and apply for a sign. That's when they're going to find out what the sign...
So we don't really have anything that the average person off the street could come in and say, I kind of like to know about these signs and read this. They'd have to read.
Read this, or they can come in and ask to, to speak with staff and, and the staff can sit down and...
Okay, that was my question.
And visit, yep.
And you all have answered it.
Which is, essentially, that's the way it's been now. I mean, I'm sure Mr. Crowe's had people come in asking questions on signs and, and again, you know, the way I've read this is it's, it is simplifying it, if at the very least, staff should be able to interpret it better, which can then interpret to the averages. should be able to interpret it better, which can then interpret to the averages.
I would suggest that the point of this ordinance tonight is for us to be able to resolve the lawsuit and put it behind us, and any additional costs that may be associated with that litigation. Because in general, if you, although there's clarifications, essentially, for example, the heights of signs weren't changed. For example, if you, under the ground sign, it already said 10 feet maximum height, it just now says 10 feet is measured from a specific point. So that, I would think, would be easier for someone who's a businessperson to read it, rather than have to call the city and say, "Okay, where do I measure the 10 feet from?"
Okay.
So there were things like that that we clarified.
So essentially, it didn't change what was there, just better defined what was already in existence, we just tried to make it more specific.
So basically, the changes that we've made, we've done because the ACLU sued us, and we're going to change the wording so that they're happy, put a Band-Aid on it, until somebody comes back at us next time.
And I think your idea is good about later on, getting the group together.
But again, it is, David, but again, then we're again at this same huge expense that we've just had.
Well, one thing about this, though, is with what's in front of us right now, is the ACLU has read this, they have agreed to this, somebody comes back, the ACLU has already seen this, I mean, what's, I mean, they're going to have a hard time taking up argument, because they have agreed that they believe this is a fair, and it meets the constitutional law.
That's exactly right.
So that's essentially what we were trying to avoid for the future, is yes, is somebody else coming back saying, "Hey, all you got to do is call, and if you don't like something in the signs, and they're going to go to bat for you." Well, no, they're going to say, "No, we've been through this, we agreed that it was good, and we're trying to avoid being taken back again for something in the future," so...
So I have a question, Mr. Fairfield.
Yes, Mrs. Bowman. Alderman Bowman, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. So there's been discussion about our business clients and concerns for their concerns in the future. My understanding is that the ordinance as presented has been approved by the ACLU in its entirety.
Yes.
So if it's been approved by them in its entirety, then are we not jeopardizing ourselves if we want to come back at some future time and change something?
I don't think so. You know, at this stage of the game, if we don't approve something based on the memorandum, we'll likely end up litigating this, and it'll get a lot messier with respect to that. And the judge could strike the bulk of it down, which would create chaos, I think, for the city and its ability to control clutter of signs in places nobody would really want them to be, for example, in the public right-of-way. Because of the way that it's currently structured, if we come back later and simplify it, but within constitutional boundaries, I don't see, I can't guarantee that somebody might not sue the city, but I think it's unlikely. We have a memorandum agreement signed by the ACLU and by Mr. Street, but more importantly, by the ACLU, by the court, and by the city, that says, "This structure and this, the way, the intent of this works is basically, is acceptable to them." Now, if we want to simplify it further, for example, and eliminate references, we've got a lot of different types of signs that we define, so that the city can permit. If we want to reduce that list, it's not the kind of thing that they will complain about. So we have, and we looked at some other ordinances that have attempted to simplify their code structure with regards to signs, that would have created a great deal of chaos in the timeframe that we really had to deal with it during the lawsuit. Now that we're done, assuming we're done tonight, then the city is in a position to go back and simplify it.
I think, as long as we stay within that intent, the intent that they have agreed on, as long as we stay on that intent, which is, again, it was the content-based is what they were, after, you know, changing the, you know, updating the, like he said, the description of where you measure for a sign, or where on the building the sign can fit, that has nothing to do with content, that has to do with location of the sign, so those kind of things. And those are the issues that Alderman, Milner, and Dickerson, I think, bring up more than anything, is people want a bigger sign on their building, or they want it in the window. I mean, those are the kind of things, and that's not in the intent of what they were seeking in injunctions, so...
Well, part of it was, actually, but, you know, but they have accepted this extent. If you go to the definitional section, it lists a lot of different types of signs. If you wanted to simplify that in some manner, that is not the kind of thing that they were complaining about.
All right, I had a motion and a second to suspend the ruling on Council Bill 003 and move it to a second reading. I will need a roll call on that, please.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Levison?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Bowman?
Aye.
Alderman Long?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman?
Aye.
All right, second reading, please.
Second reading, Council Bill 003, an ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, repealing Chapter 435 sign regulations of the Code of Ordinances, and enacting in lieu thereof a new Chapter 435 sign regulations and establishing an effective date.
Okay, roll call, please.
Alderman Long?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Bowman?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Levison?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman?
Aye.
All right, and Council Bill 003 will become ordinance 03456. Council Bill 004.
Council Bill 004, an ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to compensate Kelly Street for damages incurred pertaining to a federal lawsuit and establishing effective date.
So this is the financial part of the agreement. There were certain fees that were agreed to, less than what was originally asked. The city would pay $250 to Mr. Street for damages, attorney's fees of $5,000, court costs were $467.15, at a total cost of $57,1750. This would resolve, this is also part of the resolution of that lawsuit.
Okay, any questions? I believe those are the same numbers we were updated with before. This is again an ordinance, another one.
I move Council Bill 04 to a second reading.
Okay, I have a motion, go ahead, a second. A second from Alderman Long, to move Council Bill 004 to a second reading. Is there any further discussion? I will need a roll call, please.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Long?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Levison?
Aye.
Alderman Bowman?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
All right, second reading, please.
Council Bill 004, an ordinance of the City of Harrisonville, Missouri, authorizing the city administrator to compensate Kelly Street for damages incurred pertaining to a federal lawsuit and establishing an effective date.
A roll call, please.
Alderman Milner?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Aye.
Alderman Bachman?
Aye.
Alderman Bowman?
Aye.
Alderman Levison?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Long?
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
And Council Bill 004 become ordinance 03457. And that concludes our agenda items. Alderman, committee reports. Alderman Bowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite my fellow colleagues and members of the audience to Alderman Reese's, and I have another town hall meeting coming this Saturday morning at 9:00 at the Methodist Church. We're going to be joined by presenters from the Cass Regional Medical Center, who will be doing some training on the human simulator, and then also on a program about stopping the bleed. So that's 9:00 Saturday morning at the Methodist Church, and I'd like to encourage you all to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Bachman?
Aye.
Alderman Reese?
Yeah, I was going over some old minutes, and I happened to notice on the November 18 minutes, when we voted on adopting the operating budget, and if you remember correctly, I was the only one that voted nay, and it was reported that way, but right underneath it, it says, "Adopted unanimous." It said, "Result, ayes, adopted unanimous." I can't even say it.
I know what you're saying.
Thank you.
You think I was saying that?
Thank you. Anyway, that has my name on it, and it shouldn't have.
It should not be unanimous with one... Yes, I would agree with that.
Unanimous.
Unanimous. And it was not unanimous.
All right, well, thank you for pointing that out.
I would like to have that changed, please.
Anything to change that other than...
Well, you passed it as is. I would suggest you just put it on the next meeting's docket, and then just vote on it.
Approve the update.
Approve the update, yeah.
I would like for that to be...
You bet, absolutely. Thank you for pointing that out. Anything else? Alderman Reese, anything else to say?
Oh, no, thank you.
Okay. Alderman Milner?
I got nothing, except a new grandbaby's on him.
Oh, well, congratulations.
Plan? Nothing?
They keep saying mine is, or not mine, my grandbaby, he's major and smaller, I don't know what to do. He's not wanting to come out, so... All right. He's rolling around in there pushing around an awful lot, but...
My knee's red.
Alderman Dickerson?
Nope.
Alderman Long?
Uh, no, I'm good.
Alderman Turner?
Nope.
Alderman Levison?
First show choir event for the high school this weekend, we go to Rockbridge, and it's supposed to snow, so, yeah, it happens all the time, so pray for safe travels, because they came home with bad stuff.
That's right, you never know what it's going to do this time of year.
Not...
61 days, snow next.
Right, that's Saturday.
All right, Mr. Welch?
Our candidate filing is closed next Tuesday at 5:00. We have races in each ward and the mayor's seat. And if you've got an updated report, if you have any questions, let me know.
All right. All right, I had mentioned earlier that Monday, Martin Luther King Day, we are going to be collecting canned foods and other dry goods that the food pantry has said they need, and I hope everyone gets a chance to stop by and donate a little something. I know that they struggle to keep that full, and as I, like I said, as I, after some of the controversy last year, I made an effort to do a little more research and found that, you know, that that's really what the day was more about, was the day of service, and I have said it before, I think we are better for distinguishing ourselves for doing something good for our community, as opposed to just closing your doors, which absolutely does nothing. So this, to me, is a good way to honor, and the city is actually open to serve the public if they have something they need to come by, pay a bill, get a permit, whatever, so looking forward to that. I plan to be out there all day and helping from location, the two locations.
From L.A.
Price Chopper and Walmart, the two doors of Walmart, so... I don't know if we could send a reminder out on Facebook, but, and if you, I know some of you have your Facebook pages, I know I've seen some remind, I do see people's yard waste sitting out, I think a lot of people still don't realize that they have to call to get that picked up, so just something out there to remind people that, you know, if they do have it, they need to call for a special pickup during the winter months. They don't do it on, they don't do it on a regular basis. And I want to end with, I want to thank the board tonight. I know this felt rushed to do this ordinance. We typically try to take more time, especially when it's asked. I think it was important that we got this done, so we can get this lawsuit settled and moved on, so I want to express my appreciation for you all moving that forward and getting that passed, so we can get this settled. That's all I had this evening. Do you have the executive session, Mr. Dickerson, if you would?
I move that the Board of Alderman going to close session pursuant to the following sections of the revised state statutes of Missouri here. It's section, section 61021, legal, uh, pursuant to legal actions and sale of real estate.
Okay, go ahead, a second. A second from Alderman Long. I'll need a roll call, please.
Alderman Dickerson?
Aye.
Alderman Long?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Levison?
Aye.
Alderman Bowman?
Aye.